I will go ahead and call to order our April 10th, 2025 Longview City Council meeting. Thank you guys for being here with us tonight. First, our invocation and pledge will be led tonight by Natasha Duncan. She is the Executive Director of the East Texas Literacy Council. That provides opportunities for adults in Gregg County to develop basic literacy skills necessary to function successfully in our community, including adult literacy, GED preparation, and English as a second language. Natasha, you're welcome to say a couple of things about the Literacy Council before, and we'll go ahead and stand for the prayer and pledge with you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here. Thank you guys so much for having me. Thank you for that wonderful intro. East Texas Literacy Council, in a nutshell, we change lives through literacy. We're just a bunch of people that are passionate about people having an education to be able to change their plot in life and their families and generations to come. So thank you guys so much for having me. I would like to start by praying, so if everybody would bow their heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together today. We ask that you guide our thoughts, words, and decisions as we work together for the good of our wonderful city of Longview. As our leaders come together, we ask for your presence to guide their discussions and decisions. Grant them the clarity of mind, strength in their words, and unity in their purpose. Bless everyone in our great community. Keep them safe, hopeful, and supported. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Next, which is not on my agenda, but I would like to take a brief second to say happy birthday to Chief Ben Kemper, who I believe is spending his 50th birthday with us. We're so glad you're here. Happy birthday, Chief. That's the only embarrassing thing that I have for you tonight. No, we're not singing. No, no singing. Next is a presentation regarding our GLOW, Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Community Partner with Greater Longview United Way. And Mr. Wade, I'm going to kick that to you to start us off.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are continuing our series recognizing the community partners that make up Greater Longview Optimal Wellness by hearing from Greater Longview United Way. For over 70 years, Greater Longview United Way has been an integral part of Longview and beyond, working diligently to support organizations that speak directly to the needs of our community in the areas of education, financial stability, and health. One thing that has remained constant throughout our history is that we are better together than apart. Join me in welcoming my friend, the Good Reverend, Executive Director, Dr. Evan Doliv to share more about United Way.
Doliv, Doliv, Doliv.
Thank you, sir.
It's actually Dr. Rev, Ev.
Yes, that's a whole story. Thank you, Council and Mayor and Mr. McPhee for his opportunity. I am the Reverend Dr. Evan Doliv. I'm happy to be here today to tell you a little bit about the Greater Longview United Way. Now, I know I am a reverend, which means I have a microphone in a captive audience, but we are time limited. So I'll make my comments short. I want to start off by showing this to you, not just because you don't know who we are, but we're going through a brand refresh right now, and part of that is our new logo. So you'll start seeing that rolling out across all of our platforms and everything. So if you've ever played Monopoly, you understand how United Way works. Not in the land acquisition piece, but there was a piece on the board that's called Community Chests. And Community Chests were real things. And in 1887, a group of people got together in Denver, Colorado to form the Community Chest of Denver. And that's essentially what United Ways are. The idea was, people who had money put money into a chest, people who needed money took money out of the chest. And we fundraise pretty much all year, but primarily July through March, for 19 nonprofits and 32 programs across Gregg County and beyond. And we want to talk about how we bridge the gap for people who are in need and who need services in our area. Because Google can only get you so far. Asking around can only get you so far. We want to be that resource hub for people to find out how to be financially stable, educated, and healthy, and thrive in our community. Because we follow a metric in the United Way called ALIS. And ALIS is an acronym that means asset limited, income constrained, and employed. And that's the group of people who are just above the federal poverty line, which hasn't been updated in several years. But, so that when they lose services, like WIC and SNAP and TANF, when they're in poverty, when they cross that line, but they don't make enough to make ends meet. Kind of like in a donut hole of services. So if you take the ALIS population, the poverty population of Gregg County, and put the two together, it's 44% of our county. All right, Smith, Rusk, Harrison, and Upsher are 45, Marion is 51. So we have a great deal of need in our community, right in our own backyard. So we, like I said, we focus on 32 programs across 19 nonprofits. We highly vet these organizations. One of them you just heard from with Natasha, which is not a plant, but it happened. We also call this the eye test, so you can see all the programs that we fund. And we fund these programs through a grant system based on the money that we raise. Whatever we raise, we're able to give back into our community through a grant program. Grant apps are happening right now. You did know that, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. And grants are happening right now. We have a team of volunteers that helps go through those grants, interview the directors and the programs to ensure that the money that is raised goes back into the community and goes to amazing programs like the Literacy Council of East Texas, which you can kind of see at the top right there, the Basic ESL and the Young Adult Dropout Literacy Program. So on top of all of that we do here, I know I'm going pretty quickly just for the sake of time, we run seven initiatives. And part of one of those initiatives is what we do with the GLOW program, but I want to run through a couple real quick. You didn't see that one. Go to the next one. So our born learning trails are in three of our parks. Teague, not Teague, Broughton, Lois Jackson, and McWharter. Got it right, thanks. Mr. John, John had it. And so these are trail signs that are in those parks, are longer trails, to help give caregivers educational opportunities and learning activities for their children while they're at the park. We try to get as many as we can. We're trying to get some more in the area, but born learning is a great program. One thing I'm really excited about, and I want to kind of spend a couple of minutes on, is our literacy programs that we partner with, also with our nonprofit partners like Literacy Council. But we have Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. So if it's a child who lives in Gregg County who's under the age of five, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library will send that child a book every single month until they turn five years old for absolutely free. To date, we have given out over 50,000 books in that program in just a little over two years. We have over 2,400 kids in that program. And so we're, and that's just in Gregg County, right? It's not East Texas, not tri-county area, just Gregg. So the need is great. And we also provide schools with book vending machines. They're real, I promise. And to give schools access to high-quality literature, we just had a ribbon cutting, this is Ware Elementary on that picture, but we just had a ribbon cutting at Bramlett Elementary. We're going to have another one at Nettie Williams in a couple of weeks. And so right now, we have almost 21 machines right now giving out, to date, over 9,000 books to kids for absolutely free. So we're really investing into our kids in that way. But one thing that we want to talk about with the GLOW initiative is the info line of Gregg County. So the info line of Gregg County was started about 22, 23 years ago with the idea of connecting people to resources. This is before we had computers in our pockets, before we had an easy way of connecting people. Instead of going from faith community to faith community or door-to-door knocking, there had to be a better way to connect people to resources. And so the city and the county came to United Way 23 years ago and said, can you establish this? We said, sure. I mean, I wasn't there, so I'm sure they said yes, because we're doing it. But we get about 1,500 calls a year on this line alone, and the city, thank you for your grant every year to help us run that, and judged out, and the county also put some money on top of that. So this number, it calls our office, and we have a database of resources from across the area of people who have funds for rent, utilities, prescriptions, a whole host of things that we have, food. And then we want to make sure that we can connect those people to those resources. Instead of saying, just call this number and figure it out, we know the people's names, who to call, and we follow that person there. Our system is online, that you can search it online, but if you call and ask us, we can send you a text or an email that has the information, because invariably, when you call, the PIN's not going to work when you write it down. So the way that we work in the GLOW process is that GLOW utilizes this line a lot. So we get calls from par officers and also from the GLOW employees saying, I have this situation. Someone's looking for X, Y, and Z. Do you know of anything? We try to do our best to have our ear to the ground on what's happening in our community. And so we want to connect that, those dots for people along the way. We send out every Monday a list of about 10 nonprofit partners, whether or not they have funds for food, rent, utilities, or prescriptions, or counseling. And so you can get that updated every week, sent to you in your email. It's great to have in case you ever run across anybody that is in need. We're proud to be a partner of GLOW in the way that we, you know, be a convener to bring people together, to tackle tough issues, but also use our voice to talk about the needs of our community, like the 44% of people who can't pay their bills in Gregg County, and also to be an advocate for those in need across our area. So we're thankful for the partnership with the city and the county, as well as GLOW, to continue connecting people with the services that they need. That was quick, and it was a lot. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Cal.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment that I really appreciate having in the book vending machines. I think almost every, I know, almost every campus at Pine Tree has one.
Yes, sir.
And it's been a big incentive as far as literacy for kids and a big program, and really proud that Pine Tree ISD has been a paysetter for United Way.
They have been, yes, sir.
Since the time that I've been here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Would you mind just telling us about your small but mighty team that gets all these things down? It's just a handful of you guys that keep this up.
There is, yes. So all those things are seven initiatives, 32 programs, 19 nonprofits that we help and serve. But there's only four of us that work at the United Way. There's me, and there's Heather Stevenson, who's our Director of Development, Raven Atkinson, who is our Community Engagement Coordinator, and Hagan Rotondo, who is our Information Services Coordinator. We are all working at, you know, different things on different days, but we will all pick up the info line whenever it rings, whenever we need to, to connect people. So, yeah, we run around doing all the things we can, you know, having these meetings, having these convenings. And we do a lot for a United Way of our size. However, 70% of United Ways in the United States are five staff or fewer. So we're, you know, in the majority in that regard. But every year, we raise, you know, anywhere from a million to a million one for our community to be reinvested back in here. It doesn't go to somebody's third private jet in Malibu. It doesn't go, you know, to the home office to pay that salary. It stays right here to ensure that people get the services they need.
That's wonderful. And as a lone executive, I'd just be remiss if we missed that Dwayne Archer, our Director of Public Works, actually the chairman this year.
Yes, he was the campaign chair. Is Dwayne's on the board? Yes, that's right.
I appreciate you. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Next up is citizen comment. I have one card from Melissa Berry. If you would please step to the podium, we'll ask you to state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Melissa Berry, and my address is, the full address?
Sure.
Okay, 601 Bergstrom Place in Marshall, Texas. I'm a landowner in multiple counties, and I've lived in multiple counties because I was a natural resource specialist for the government. And one of the counties I covered was Jaws County. And so I'm here today to talk to y'all about water. I was at a meeting yesterday. It's a state water meeting. I invited some people in Longview and Gregg County to come to that meeting, and I hope they were there. The state meeting addressed a lot of our water issues that we will all be dealing with very shortly. I wish it wasn't true, but we're out of time. So water, water is money. And y'all are aware that right now in this state, there is a huge push for movement of water, and it is supported. And we are one of the objectives for water. There's a lot of things going on in the background. It affects us indirectly and very much directly, because we need to plan for our future. And 50 years is not enough time. 20 years is not enough time. Two years is not enough time. We are at least 20 years behind. An old engineer would say 50 years behind. We are on lifespans on all of our facilities, our infrastructure. We've reached a time limit, and the clock is ticking for us. I'm challenging y'all to read your water plans. They're put out every five years. They're huge binders. They're online. We have a very short timeframe to turn them back. The state gave us those plans yesterday and reminded us that we needed to provide information on multiple sources, of which y'all actually have a group representative as a board member. So you have irrigation, livestock, manufacturing, mining, municipal, and electric and power. None of these numbers that I've read on here fully support what I see that's going on currently for us right now, because they're using numbers and census information from a very long time ago, because that's what they've got. Most of the plan's information needs to be updated, and y'all all need to be talking about it with every community vendor, water source, whether it's groundwater or surface water. Y'all need to get together with city and county and pull each other's resources together. This drought, I was here for this drought. Sometimes our droughts are short. Sometimes they're many years long. We had people that were selling out, moving out. We had animals dying. We had people transporting water. We had wells go dry, many wells, because we have a lot of shallow wells and not that many deep wells. And with the groundwater situation ongoing and us not knowing really where we stand, one of the suggestions yesterday that we're looking at was, what is going to be? Are we going to have a groundwater district, or are we not? Are we going to talk about surface water? Diversity. Y'all have to have three sources of water for drought. You can no longer have two, because the chances are, one or two will run dry. Thank y'all. Have a great one.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any item that council would like to pull for questions or further discussion? Can we pull G? Yes. G is Mr. Archer, a contract for TNN fence construction.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. So I was looking back on the last council meeting. This is the one that we rejected all the bids.
Yes.
Because there was a mistake.
Yes.
With the bid. So the one that made the mistake, was he able to rebid, or?
He was able to, but did not, so.
Okay, because when I talked to him, he said he was, you told him he couldn't rebid?
No, no, we rejected, we rejected all the bids because of his. We couldn't, we couldn't have him just, hey, let me give you another bid. He bid really low. And so we rejected all the bids, put this together, and sent it out for bids.
Okay, but when I'm looking at the other bids, they were considerably high, but now they're kind of, they're more closer to what he was bidding.
Yeah, we adjusted a little bit. So we went from a taller fence. We lowered it down, trying to make sure that we keep our budget where we need it to be.
So then the specifications changed?
They did on this one. Yes, ma'am.
So does the process start over then?
Yes. When we put this bid together, it was a new set of specifications, and we sent out to the fence company saying, here's the new specifications. Now submit a bid for this new specification. And they did.
So how long does it have to sit out? Because I thought it was like 30 days that you had to sit out for a bid. Did the process then start over?
It did start over. It was two weeks. But, you know, between council meetings, we have two weeks. And so between two of them, I mean, we had, we had quite a bit of time there to get that put together.
Okay, I'm just looking at like the discrepancy in the numbers, because he bid lower, or that company bid lower, they bid excessively high, and then now they're closer to his.
So, but if you remember, he bid, and then he said, hey, I can't do it for that money. I need to pull my bid back out. So we thought, hey, the fairest way to handle that is, let's just put together specs again. We'll adjust, because we saw some things when we saw the way, the prices that came in. We said, let's adjust them a little bit, so we'll lower the bid. We send that specification back out. We got people to bid on that, and that's the new, that's the new bids you have in front of you.
But I guess his concern is that he said he didn't have an option to get it to rebid.
He could certainly have bid on this one. Yeah, he certainly could have.
Okay, well, he said he didn't have.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's, that's not true.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
But I'll reach out, I'll reach out to him.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, because it's a local, he's a local, he's a local vendor.
Yeah.
It would be cheaper than the rest, so.
Not, not with the new specifications, he wouldn't.
I mean, they all were down.
He would have to rebid.
All of them, all of the other bids went significantly down because of this.
Because we changed what they were asking for.
They changed what we changed what we're asking for.
And when they changed what they asked for, it so it meant that it would cost them less.
Yes, he could have had a lower bid, but he did not bid this time, and we sent him notice, so he could have bid.
Exactly, yes.
I mean, that's not what he said, but that's what we're going to go with.
Yeah, but we can reach out to him and make sure that we have.
Yeah, I'll make sure, make sure he's good and explain anything that I might need to with him.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I sure will. All right, thank you.
Any other things on the consent agenda that council would like to discuss? If not, I will entertain a motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, no opposing.
I was saying, hi.
Okay. Shannon, are you voting against?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved with one in opposition. Moving on to zoning items. Zoning item A, a public hearing will be held to consider application filed by Fisherman's Market. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant to serve mixed beverages for onsite consumption in general retail zoning district. An S U P is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. In 2022, an S U P was granted for a property directly to the west at 120 Johnston Street for the same thing. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. This item requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Choi? I have no speaker cards on this item, so I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item B, a public hearing will be held to consider application filed by Jean Barnes. Ms. McChoy, Ms. Choi, sorry.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located at 418 Pearl Street from multifamily seen here on the map to light commercial zoning district. Currently, a dwelling is located on this lot, and the applicant is proposing a hydroponic business at this location. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This item requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time. Are there any questions or discussion for Ms. Choi? I have no speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item C, a public hearing will be held to consider application filed by the City of Longview requesting a rezone. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. So the City of Longview is requesting a rezone of this property seen here on the zoning map from multifamily three to single-family four zoning district located along Thornton Street north of Eden Drive. Currently, there are several single-family homes along this property. Our previous zoning ordinance allowed single-family homes in multifamily zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. Staff is requesting to rezone these properties to bring them into compliance, which would alleviate any future permitting and possible sales of these properties. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This item does require a public hearing that I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Choi? I have no speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item D, a public hearing will be held to consider application filed by Michael Smith requesting a rezone. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone the properties seen here in the zoning map from office to single-family two zoning district located at 107 and 109 East Hoyt Drive. Currently, there is a single-family home located on one of the lots, and the applicant would like to build a single-family home on one of the other lots. As stated previously, the previous zoning ordinance did permit single-family homes in this zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. So in order to correct this, the applicant is requesting to rezone these properties to bring them into compliance. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This item does require a public hearing that I will open at this time. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Choi? I have no speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi. Action items. Action item A, consider a resolution modifying certain city fees and charges for EMS services, approving the outsourcing of EMS billing, and authorizing a professional services agreement with Emergicon for professional management services for EMS billing. Thank you, Chief Parker. I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, Mary, our council, Mr. McPhee, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you now concerning Fire Department's EMS billing department. Back in January this year, Chief Stillman and Ashley Armstrong began vetting this proposal of outsourcing our EMS billing. They're not vetting. We realize that we are one of two cities in our comparison city still doing in-house billing. Contracting our billing would allow us to focus on the operations and providing the best prehospital care to our citizens and visitors, and allow experts to streamline the complex billing aspect of our emergency services. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rahim Fancy from Emergicon to share what their expertise in EMS billing are with the proposal.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, esteemed council members. It's a pleasure and honor to be here before you to speak about an opportunity to partner between Emergicon and the City of Longview. Emergicon's been around for over almost 19 years now, supporting over 200 agencies in Texas. We are the largest EMS-based, founded, owned, Texas best, best in Texas. If you can find a word with Texas and best in EMS, we are in that category. And it's not just about how we do things, it's the people that we have to and the culture that we bring to it, and how we understand and support first responders. Between our billing department, pre-billing, AR, and compliance, we're able to bring forward the best in class to support our agencies and first responders. As you can see, we're spread all over, and we are knowledgeable and the best healthcare finance in EMS knowledgeable to bring that forward. I promise to keep this short and sweet and try to just answer any questions as you have them. So part of what we're suggesting as well here is adjusting the fee schedule. Each EMS agency is allowed to set fees for the services it provides. Commercial insurance reimburses those agencies based on their policies and coverages, which can vary. Now, the fee schedule should enable an agency to capture the most revenue from commercial insurance. Now, to do this, we believe that there are some minor changes that can occur to y'all's fee schedule, and this will help maximize reimbursement from commercial insurance specifically, and align your agency with current industry standards. If we take a look here, on the far left, we have Longview's current fee schedule. In the middle, what we're showing that could move along between mileage and disposables, which again, is focused on how we can capture with commercial insurance the most dollars possible. On the far right, we have the Texas Department of Insurance Submittals showing the average across Texas. And so this is where we believe there's an opportunity for improvement. Realistically, even as we recommend these increases, the ultimate end case is that we resident write-offs put in place, so that all City of Longview residents will be covered. They will not receive a bill. We are only looking at insurance and how to capitalize dollars from them. They will not receive a bill. We are only looking at insurance and how to capitalize dollars from them. Insurance carriers are the only ones receiving invoices. Here, we're able to project that on average per transport, we'll collect $446 and bring in about $5.4 million with this adjusted fee schedule, with our commission rate of ten percent. That should be about approximately 3.67% more per year, about $190,000. Ultimately, this cash per transport is an average across Medicare, Medicaid, B C B S, C U H C, and being able to pull that information together on average, it varies between all of them. And we think this change in the fee scales and what we can do can really maximize how you support your first responders, your agency, and your residents altogether. We are confident that we can bring this to fruition, and this projected C P T with your support. Any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Gamble.
First of all, thank you for being here. I appreciate effectiveness and efficiency to ultimately save our taxpayers some money and also help our EMS services. My main question is, so you're saying this will only affect insurance, but how or will this affect self-pay residents?
No, not at all. So they would fall under that resident write-off category, where either if you have insurance, we'll bill that. If not, it'll be written off.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and just how does that write-off work for us as a city? Like, what is the benefit to that?
So the benefit is to the residents, and you continue to support and prevent them from having to take on a greater burden beyond the insurance carriers.
Thank you so much.
I would like to summarize, and you tell me if I say something wrong, please. I believe that you've said most of your presentation, I just want to make sure my understanding is correct. So when we started looking at this as an option, you came in and kind of sat down and looked at what we were currently doing, and identified some areas that we had gaps in the way that we were billing insurance. I think we would say we're not specialized or experts in that area. So having that knowledge from other areas would allow you to say, here's some things that we need to add as categories as we're billing commercial insurance, and I appreciate that you focused on that. So as we're adopting that fee schedule, there would be no new costs to Longview residents. Those would be new fees, but they would be assessed against commercial insurance. And then in fact, our residents may come out financially better because we may be able to write off future bills that we're not currently writing off. You may not know the answer to that. And then from the city's perspective, this is a billing generation that we get from EMS services. Our city budget is about five million for that, and we would anticipate that the city would basically net that same amount less your fee because of efficiency. Does that sound correct?
That all sounds absolutely correct from what we've understood in our discussions.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sam.
And this would be for the city, but how does it affect the EMS subscription?
I don't think it has anymore.
So would that go away with an ambulance?
Yes, we've talked about that. So obviously, we have some enrollees, but should council decide to move forward with this, then there is some billing that we will work to reimburse to those people that have done that because obviously, there's not that additional incentive for that emergency services subscription program. So actually, they get kind of the same benefit, but they don't have to pay for it.
Yeah, that's good. Awesome. All right, thank you.
David, more?
Okay, so in this write-off, you're saying that with all commercial billing, not only commercial, but Medicare, Medicaid, anything like that, usually they get a bill like when they use ambulance services or whatever, and you're saying that that bill is not going to happen?
Correct. We would only be collecting what we can from Medicare, Medicaid, B C B S, any insurance carrier, and after that, the rest will be written off so that the residents are not receiving any additional burden.
And I know sometimes even though things are written off, they still send them to collections. Do y'all do that?
No, we do not. And we work closely with the city to ensure that we are meeting exactly those standards and only doing anything you've asked, which is not anything that I've understood from our discussions.
And then I guess my next question will be kind of for you. So we're behind on the billing, and that is, are they going to take up that part of the three months that we're behind on? How's that going to work?
They're actually doing something with us just because of relationships. Obviously, they have people that were in the fire service and have been in the fire service, and through relationships that we have, and also people that have come to us, they said, we'll come onsite. And if city council approves this tonight, they'll be onsite Monday to start onboarding us. They have never done that for another customer. They understand what we have, and because the discussions have started since January, they've been prepared and analyzing that. So that is what we have talked to them about, is coming in, picking up, and moving forward from where we were.
Okay, and so right now, we have one employee left doing billing?
Yes, ma'am. I think the easiest way to say that, we've had a full apple cart turnover of employees within the last three months, and will by the end of next week. So there will only be one employee, and it is a new employee that is currently being trained in billing. So she is not up to speed yet. What I will tell you is that if we do go with this service, the cost savings that the city will have on the personnel side is we will not have to have two people in billing anymore. We will have one as the liaison between Emergicon and the EMS section chief, who, Chief Lawrence is here, and they will get those billing corrections done. So we will actually be able to reduce staffing by one employee.
Yeah. Ms. Moore, are you good?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, I saw Mr. Conley first.
Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Well, I just want to go back to what the chief said. I didn't get that. As far as, how many, you said we're one of just a few departments that aren't contracted currently?
Yeah, we're one of two in our comparison city. Beaumont is the only other city that does in-house billing in our comparison cities.
And one thing, if I can add to that, Beaumont is a little bit of a different creature in terms of, they just assumed the EMS billing services for Beaumont in December of last year. So they are relatively new to this, so they wouldn't have been set up necessarily to be in-house or contracted.
And I just want to get clarification. I know a couple have asked this, the self-pay, when they, you mentioned being a write-off. So if I don't, if my insurance doesn't cover it, will I still be, will I receive a bill? Will the Longview, City of Longview residents receive a bill?
No.
Okay. And then you said we are adjusting the fees. I saw the change per mile. Can you explain, you know, the comparison of the reasoning behind the adjustment of some of the pricing?
Sure. So it's focused around on the mileage. I think right now it's fourteen, we're recommending about twenty-four, and then the addition of disposables and oxygen. And again, the whole point with these fee schedules is how can we convince, work with commercial insurance, which is not always as helpful and friendly with reimbursements, to ensure that we can cover as much of those costs that your first responders are incurring? And so it's with that, that as we bill that out and send them the cost, show them the things occurring, that they are more likely to be open with reimbursement and increase that amount. It is always a battle and a challenge to find what is the optimal way to bill things out and get that from them. And that's where our experience in constantly evolving research allows us. And that's where we think this recommendation is a step towards supporting that and increasing how much we can bring in reimbursements for you all.
Do you have comparable, Mr. City Manager? You talked about cost savings, and that's what we're hoping to get, not just with the position, but also, have we researched the comparison of how this could affect our overall savings?
So let's talk about, the direct savings is just what I told you as far as one employee. I will tell you that there's some avoidance of liability with medical handling of information that actually will get us out of, remove some of the liability from the city on that. The indirect things that we could or can gain is, I will assure you, and I'm sure he will gladly say yes, this is not the set of fees they came with us to adjust it to. It was much different. And what I told him was that we needed to do this in a measured approach to make sure that we are actually performing up to the revenue expectations, and then within three or four months to come back and say, hey, this is really where your fees should be. Because I actually think that the citizens of Longview, every one of us that are sitting up here, and most of the people in the audience, are actually subsidizing what insurances should be paying for the services we provide. So I think there's some revenue upside in the future without costs for our citizens, which actually makes us revenue positive in a world that I've been preaching is revenue negative.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Wade, go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to reiterate the fact. So over time, we've had a staff in-house, correct? That's handled all of our EMS billing. And over the years, do you mind kind of explaining to me that staff's ability to manage our EMS, Mr. Parker and/or Mr. McPhee?
Yeah, so over the years or so, I know when we started EMS billing, I know talking to Mr. McPhee, they started in the water utilities department and did billing out of the water utilities department. And through some changes, they moved them to the fire department. And at that time, there was four billers at the fire department. And through changes in technology, upgrading our software, we went from four to three. And then we upgraded again in 2017, and they started doing some things. Then we went from three to two. And that's where we are currently now with the two, with a biller and a coder, is how they do it. So he wants to say so.
One thing I will add to that is that, and Ms. Moore, you actually have been around the industry a little bit more than a lot of us sitting up here. But when COVID actually came into play, many of the billing companies, they were just like everyone else, except they were essential services. They could not get sick. Billing companies, most of them were outsourced, and they sent those folks home, and it became a work-from-home kind of job. And that is not what the service as a government employee, we work from the office, we show up at the office. And so it became very difficult for us to recruit and retain people when they could do the same work for the same money and never have to leave their home. And so over time, that change has really impacted it. And in fact, it has impacted the amount of turnover that we've had in the last five years. I think that's accurate.
Yes, sir. So with that, and in January this year, our coder resigned and went home to work doing the same job she was doing from home. And then our biller, which was about three weeks ago, she left as well.
Over the last five, I don't know how far back you can go, Mr. McPhee. I can go back a little further, because he's been here. How have we seen our billing department, you know, the amount of work increase and/or decrease over the last? If you can give me five years.
So I would think, so over the five years, that billing work has increased because our call volume has increased. So I'll just give you an example. When I came to work here in 1998, we ran nine thousand, less than 10,000 calls a year in EMS. So right now, I think if I'm right, Chief Lawrence, we were roughly right about 20,000 calls of EMS this year. So our EMS billing has doubled over the last twenty years, or twenty-five years since I've been here. So does that?
Yeah, that answers my question. And then I don't necessarily know if this applies, but I can't help but to think about my district. And, you know, I'm willing to bet, and I asked Mr. McPhee this, and we weren't able to get an exact number, but I'm willing to bet that District Three probably gets, and or to South Longview, gets a lot of those calls, those EMS calls. And I know we're discussing billing, but I just want to be sure that there's not going to be any type of deviation from the service that, you know, our clients will receive. And I know we're talking about billing, and I know we're talking about that area, but, you know, something about when everything is in-house and everything's here locally, and you can drive down to City Hall and talk to people if you have a problem, as opposed to not being able to do that once this is outsourced.
So two things, I'll answer both, two of those, you got two things I'll talk about there. So we're still going to have the liaison that works in the office at the fire department that will work directly with Emergicon, will be able to answer those questions, come in and visit about whatever it is they have to contact with.
Sure.
And then, and also with this, now Chief Lawrence and Ashley and all them, so some of their job right now is to focus on Medicare, Medicaid, insurance rules, to be able to do in-house billing. With this going outside now, we can let Chief Lawrence and then focus on the patient care that we give to our, they can really focus on training and then upping that care that we give to our staff. So I would have to say that our care is probably going to go up instead of go down.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Gamble, had her hand up first. Go ahead.
Yes, and so we spoke about liability insurance. So if we were to approve this, would this lower our premium on our liability insurance for the city?
I don't believe so, but it would relieve us of some of the penalties that we might be due if we did something incorrectly. Obviously, our arrangements with Emergicon, they're experts in that. We have had to do that in the past. That's one of the things that it would remove that potential liability.
Okay. Could we check into it? I just know from like a small business perspective, sometimes when you remove certain things from your policy or when you outsource it for patient care or efficiency, sometimes you do get like a small kickback, but everything matters.
I promise you, we'll look into it. If this approves, we'll make the call next week.
Mr. Conley?
Just a question for Emergicon. You know, you mentioned, Mr. McPhee, about with, since COVID, the billing, billing from working from home and how that's recruitment and retention is difficult. Has, just a curiosity, Emergicon, have you guys noticed you have quite a few businesses or agencies that you're helping in Texas? Has your, has your services increased since the COVID years with that? Because is that common? The agencies have reached out to you because of difficulty finding staff?
Absolutely. There's multiple reasons that they'll reach out, for efficiency, focusing on patient care, just the fact that what we can do is bring in better reimbursables and thus support it. So that is fair. We do about 415,000 transports a year. We've been growing about eighteen percent over the past three years. And like I said, to that approximate 200 client count. So definitely, there's a mix of reasons, but we are growing and finding that folks find our partnership valuable, and we value them in return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newsden.
And then in addition, Chief Parker, you mentioned the software was, when do we put the software in?
So the latest one was in 2017.
So 2017. So is safe to say it's getting close to being outdated?
It is getting close to being outdated.
Okay. So we're also, in addition to saving on the one full-time employee, saving the constituents' money, not having to enroll in the subscription service for the EMS, but we're also going to save money in the future regarding not having to pay for updated software.
That's correct.
Good. Anything else? That's Mr. Purtle.
So this is basically being driven by insurance, right? I mean, you wouldn't have a job if it wasn't for the insurance because you're estimating that we're spending five million a year, and whatever we save, or we'll still be spending roughly five million a year, but they'll take a percentage off of that five million. So where are we coming out?
Yeah, we're bringing in.
We already do, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll still be bringing in about five million, but they'll be taking some off of that to pay for their billing.
Yes.
Now, what happens if we don't, somebody doesn't have any insurance? Let's put it this way, what if they don't have Medicare or Medicaid? Medicare, let's put Medicare on there.
If somebody doesn't have any insurance whatsoever, then they wouldn't receive any.
So you're working for nothing at that point.
That would be correct, because we only collect if we bring in any dollars. So we do all the work upfront, ideally through a claim, gathering information, thus reimbursed, and then have a share in the percentage of that. And so if nothing comes, nothing happens, but we will process things through and maintain those records for you all for your review. So you have a full record of every ticket, every transport, every claim activity, even being written off.
So it's basically, your job is basically insurance-driven?
Not actually, sir. We, because Medicare, Medicaid, and claims to that as well. And so net of our fees, we believe that approximately 5.4 million, which is about a $190,000 increase, with those minor changes in the fee schedule is what we yield. So we do think we'll bring in a smaller increase, net of our fees. But Medicare and Medicaid are always a large portion of any demographic, population, and activity. And so that is a big chunk of what we do, and knowing that very well helps us to be accurate, timely, and make sure we're not causing any issues on any end. And so that's a part of our.
Have you seen any increase in the towns that you're in? Have you seen any increase in their insurance rates, medical insurance rates, because you've been there?
That is not information that I would have access to or have seen or have heard through our conversations. Generally, the increases in reimbursement have been significant, honestly, across about thirty percent on average. And so with that, we haven't heard any further conversation or concerns about the insurance rates at this time.
Thank you.
I really think we need to table this and discuss this some more, because I'm not comfortable with this.
I'd like to really approve it.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second?
Well, because this is what I want to say, because I get what you're saying, that, you know, it's all insurance-driven, and that's where y'all are going to get the bulk of your fees. But at the end of the day, if we have more people that don't have insurance, and y'all are not making money, then that's when we come at risk, is what I would say. then that's when we come at risk, is what I would say. Because you can't just keep doing this, and most of your calls are coming from people without insurance. You don't make money.
I am sure that that is considered in your business model.
Correct. And for us, I mean, our consideration isn't that suddenly that would change. We are able to, through good record-keeping from the Fire Department EMS agency, on kind of the level of service, the, the payer mix, to be able to make a reasonable assumption of what it is, and we stand by our ability to support you all, your agency, first responders, and residents, regardless of that shift. Because for us, it's about focusing on, on a per-claim basis, and can we maximize, and then can we share in that with you? And so for us, it's just about providing the best service possible. It wouldn't be a concern or end from that regard, because there's always activity, and we're happy to see wherever it goes to support you all.
Yeah. But I've just seen that with insurance claims and stuff, when it goes like that, that when they see, when certain insurance companies say, okay, well, they're, they're charging us an extra amount of dollars, don't, we don't want you to use this EMS. And that, those are the calls that the people will get from home, like with the insurance carrier. Because even, we have clinics around here that charge a way higher rate than, say, Good Shepherd or Longview Regional, and they charge a higher rate. And a lot of people, their jobs are not even allowed to go there. And so that's why I'm just trying to make sure that we don't get in a situation to where, hey, this is not cost-effective for us when you, you're calling EMS, the way that y'all do y'all billing.
Absolutely. I think that's a reasonable concern. From our perspective, we don't believe or know anything to that particular effect. We know that as an emergent services, as a need that y'all are providing to the residents, we haven't seen or heard anything from the major carriers such as BCBS, UHC, Cigna, Aetna, of that nature. So I don't have better information on that that I could provide on that front, but I do understand your concern.
Yeah. Because I mean, Medicare and Medicaid will be a, be, a big one too as well, not just the poverty. You really don't have a problem with the poverty. It's the Medicare and the ones that depend on Medicare and Medicaid that is, that's the biggest drawback.
Absolutely. And I, like I said, from my perspective, my information that we've seen from across the 19 years, we have not quite seen that particular comment or concern or had that show up. Usually Medicare and Medicaid are quite good about what we're providing documentation, the claims, and supporting the agencies as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Conne.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I know Mr. Pearl brought up the, the idea of tabling this, and we had, we're in the middle of discussion still. I don't know, what's, can you, Mr. McPhee, can we talk a little bit about the timeline here? What's the, the action of tabling this versus voting on it? Like, kind of give us.
No, I made the motion to table it first before they made the motion to, to vote on it.
Technically, you did not make a motion. You said that you thought we should table it, and you did not make a motion.
I was making the motion.
So, no, it's not.
Then you called it off.
The words are important. But let's talk, we can talk about that real quick. One, we haven't billed for two to three months, I believe. So if we don't do it tonight, we are going to lose money for the city of Longview. If we don't do it tonight, we have no backup plan in place. I understand that the insurance is a horrible game. We hate the insurance game as much as anybody else, and we don't want to contribute to it, but that's the job we have. Entering into this tonight makes the city more efficient, and it actually saves our residents money. I see no reason not to enter into this tonight, so I have no interest in tabling it for further discussion, because we honestly, we don't have another option.
So I guess my question, though, so we're still saying we're two to three months behind right now?
Yes. Our billing department doesn't have enough people. We've doubled what we need to bill. We are currently behind. If we do not enter this tonight, we will lose that billing, because you can only go back so far. So it is not an item that I think we should table.
Well, also with the insurance, we're, we're underbilling insurance, is what's happening with what we're at right now, right? So basically, for every single claim, that we could be getting an extra, so much money from insurance because they would approve that amount, we're sending them a lower money. So ultimately, what we're doing is we're subsidizing, the taxpayers here are subsidizing the insurance companies, because we are not experts in the billing, and we're requiring now to under, under, undercharge the insurance. And with your expertise in coming in, we're able to bill to the full extent that we're able to bill to the commercial insurance companies. And the taxpayers are not going to brunt any of this. It's all written off. We save money on the, on the overhead and the liability, the software, all the other different things that come with it. And then also, it gets us out of the situation where we're in, where we're behind on billing, because we're not able to keep up with the surge in demand and the difficulty of hiring employees due to the fact of the nature of them being more remote. And, and builder, and coders are, are extremely well-sought after right now. So.
And indirectly, doing this is going to buy billing appropriately, the bill, appropriate billing is going to subsidize those who can't pay essentially. And so that's essentially what your business model is, is that's why you are billing insurance to the fullest capacity, because even though we hire city staff, and I know they do a great job, if they're not experts in insurance, I mean, insurance is its own game, and with legislative session and other things, like laws and rules change. And we could lose a lot of money on the table based off one or two legalities. So.
Yeah. And I understand all that about losing money. It's just that I think that the problem that some of us have with it is waiting till we're three months behind in billing to be forced to say, hey, we need to make this decision tonight. There's no more discussion. Make it tonight, because we're three months behind in billing when we should have been looking at this when we were one month behind in billing.
Sure. I think we received that comment, but here we are.
Yeah, I just, I was the same thing. I mean, I, I feel like it's, you know, we'd obviously want to save money. We want to do what's best for our taxpayers, but it is a little bit uncomfortable being an action item when we're kind of forced because we're two to three months behind in billing.
This is kind of like buying a car. You walk in, you get, you see the salesman, and the salesman says, right now, it's going to be this price. You put it on there, and that's what you just did, Kristin. You're forcing us at this point.
Mr. Pearl, I know that Mr. McPhee contacted you this week and invited you to talk to you about it.
We don't do it, we're going to lose money. We don't know that. We don't know that.
I'd like to call for decor, and we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor, two opposed. Item is approved. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Good discussion, guys. Next on our agenda is Action Item B. Consider a resolution affirming the city's interest in the reliable and equitable supply of raw water from Lake of the Pines, opposing any actions that would compromise water availability, sell water rights, or lease large quantities of water, or increase costs to Longview ratepayers, and directing the city manager to advocate for the city of Longview's interests in all relevant forums. This item is under my name tonight. I believe a lot of council has probably received requests from others, as I have, from Representative Dean's office, Judge LaFleur in Marion County, and others who have considered these resolutions. I think everybody is probably aware of what's happening with water in East Texas. Thank you to our citizen comment. Thank you to Brandy Brown, sitting in the back there, for helping organize our speakers tonight that will give us some presentations. So I'd like to invite up Ms. Laura Ashley Overdyke. She is the Executive Director of the Caddo Lake Institute to give us some information on the resolution we will consider.
First of all, I just want to thank you so much for taking your time and having us here tonight to share information with you, and for the public being engaged in learning as well. So my job at the Caddo Lake Institute is to, to protect Caddo for future generations and use science to help make good decisions. And part of that is an obligation to share that information with the public, so that the local residents can make good decisions about this crown jewel of East Texas that I think all of East Texas is very proud to have and, and to enjoy, and adds greatly to our quality of life. And so if you're not, if you're not aware of what's going on, and you're, you know, like, what's going on, Caddo Lake is the only natural lake in the whole state of Texas, and it is over at the far right. And all the water in our basin, the watershed is in black, all the water flows from west to east. And so if we're the only natural lake in the whole state, all the other lakes were created by damming up rivers to create man-made reservoirs. So Caddo is at the bottom of several reservoirs that were man-made. And when the regional water district, the Northeast Texas Municipal Water District, which you all are accustomed of, they own water rights in Lake of the Pines. And at the time those were given in the 1950s, there was no requirement to provide anything downstream of Lake of the Pines for Big Cypress Bayou or for Caddo Lake. And so there's no legal requirement for them to provide any water downstream. And so that grandfathered-in permit from the 50s can be sold legally to its fullest extent. And then that created problems for Caddo Lake. So when the dam went in, we were, everyone's happy that Jefferson did not flood anymore, that there was great recreation for people, and homes built around Lake of the Pines, and, and really high-quality water provided to the region. But unfortunately, downstream, what that meant was trees were dying off, water quality was getting bad at Caddo Lake, fish that were supposed to be there were disappearing. And so we've been working very well with the water district and the Corps of Engineers to, to make a little tweaks to how water is released to improve all of the health of Caddo Lake. The water quality has gone up since we've done that. The fish that are supposed to be there are returning, and the forests are much healthier. So it's been working great. But then we are very close to the Dallas Metroplex, and their suburbs are growing. And so they have been in discussions to purchase water out of Lake of the Pines, which is the main source of water for Caddo. And so we got scientists together to say, is this a big deal or is this no big deal? Is there a problem, or is it fine? And what they discovered is about 70% of the time, there's plenty of water, it would be fine. But 30% of the time, there is not enough water, and downstream would be damaged. So this is a map. It doesn't show it perfectly well, but blue is full, normal Caddo Lake full, and then there's hash marks about halfway in of where the water would be in a drought if this sale went through. So Caddo would be a foot lower than historic lows if this sale of a very large quantity of water for us were to go through. And so that's why I have a responsibility to share that information, that there is a, a reason to be concerned that the health of Caddo Lake is in jeopardy. Now, my focus is Caddo, which is all the way at the bottom. So I've been learning a lot about Lake of the Pines itself, which had not been the focus of my institute. And so through that, I have gotten to know a man named Jerry Thomas, who spent 42 years working for the Corps of Engineers managing Lake of the Pines. And so I'm going to, going to use my resource of this wonderful engineer who managed Lake of the Pines and has been a professional engineer for over 50, 50 years, right there at Lake of the Pines. Lots of water moves through Lake of the Pines, and, and I've been trying to understand from Jerry that the movement of water through Lake of the Pines is not wasteful, that having extra water moving is not a bad thing. It doesn't mean you're wasting your resources. So I'm trying to understand, does the water move in through Lake of the Pines that is not all sold, does it help the water quality? Does it help the lake stay healthier for longer? Is the water wasted or not?
Well, this is a real technical question, and we could probably spend all night, and y'all will have all night. So I, I'm going to just generally say what I say. And if any of y'all's got any questions about me, I know you're going to vote, but if you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them later, because it's a very important questions. Just like the lady up here at first said about the state. It's an important thing for the whole state. And what you, if you have, if you draw down a lake, and you don't have any discharge, what it is, it's like having a, if any of you have a pond, it's, if it's stagnant for a long time, it just kills all the quality of the water, kills the, you know, fish and everything in it. And, and that's what, if you draw this lake down, the mounts they're talking about, you're going to not have Lake of the Pines, like you know. It's one of the best lakes in Texas, I'm here to tell you. And it's that away because of the inflows and the outflows. If it was just stagnant, if it wasn't for that, it wouldn't be the lake it is. And that's what you got to consider. And you got to consider the fact that the last time I was here was when the city of Longview was wanting to get water from Lake of the Pines. And, and I was, I just made a presentation about the dam and all that. But you got to think about it. That day may come again. And if, if that water is gone to the Metroplex, it's gone. There's no getting it back, once you sign the contract. And I, they, if you want to see something, look at Regency's five-year plan. They've got to draw all the water they can get from anywhere as they can get, and they're not going to care about East Texas.
So in your professional opinion, would moving this much water out of Lake of the Pines be a, a bad decision for Lake of the Pines in East Texas?
It would be bad for East Texas. Just use the example, say, a district wanted to come here that needed a lot of water, and you had a contract, and they were pumping it all to Dallas. You think they're going to give, let you have the water back? That's all right.
So thank you for the two of us. And we still, further, you know, I'm working my way up that basin, because there's lots of, lots of lakes in the basin, and a broader perspective is Longview's own Nelson Roach.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I want you to know, first of all, that many, many years ago, when your mayor came to Longview, Texas, I was her boss.
That's true.
And as we sit here.
I don't work there anymore. Glad you're here, Mr. Roach.
As we sit here today in this meeting, she's my boss. I'm a lawyer. I've been in, I lived in Longview since 1987. I practiced law in Dangerfield since 1987. I live at the Bramlitz Estate, which is at the corner of McCann and the inner loop there, H.G. Bozley. I, I want to talk to you about the overall scope of this issue. And what I want to tell you is, is you may not realize this, but this is the most existential question that you will face in the Longview City Council. And that's because water is life. You cannot have water, you cannot have life without water. And we have been, we have had abundant water in East Texas. And up until now, we have taken it for granted that the water's there. We turn on our, turn on our, our faucet, and the water is there. And, you know, there's old saying that if you want to be unappreciative for doing a good job, you need to be in the water business, the sewer business, or the intellectual technology business. And unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, the water wars have come to East Texas. And what that means is, is that in California, in the Los Angeles Valley, 1,000 people a day leave Los Angeles Valley, and they move, and they go somewhere. And the reason why they leave, people say, well, they're leaving because of taxes, and they're leaving because of regulations, et cetera, and so forth. But actually, if you look at the root cause of why they're leaving, they're leaving because there is too much population in the Los Angeles Valley to support living in a semi-arid or arid climate. And so in order to do that in California, they have to move in water from as far as 200 miles away. And the net effect of all of that is all the regulation, all the taxes, and all the burdens that people are dealing with in California. Those people are leaving, and they're going to primarily to two places, Austin, Texas, and North Texas. And the problem with that is, is that unlike our climate here, the climate of North Texas and the climates of Austin, Texas are arid climates. And they cannot support the population that's coming. The estimates by the North Texas Water Department as to the population growth in North Dallas and, and East Dallas is 80,000 people a year over the next 30 years. The climate cannot support that growth in population. And so therefore, the North Texas Water Department, in a desperate attempt to supply water to the North Texas region, is, is creating or wanting to create pipelines all over East Texas to suck, suck water out of East Texas and transport it to North Dallas. They want, they've just created a lake called Bodark Lake. They want to raise the level of Wright-Patman Lake, and they want to extend the pipeline all the way to Texar Cana. They even want to extend the pipeline south to Lake of, to, to Lita Bend and suck 300,000 acre-feet of water out of there a year. So the point is, is you'll see in this diagram, the green is the North Texas Water Department service area. A lot of people, a growing population, a lot of state representatives, a lot of state senators. And then you have us over there on the map, Longview, Texas, and we're not that big, and we don't have that many people, and we're not that powerful. This is a power play. This is a water war, and that war is just now starting in our region. And what they want is they want our water. This is a PowerPoint presentation from the North Texas Water Department. If you look over on the right, you'll see Lake of the Pines. They want to build a 107-mile pipeline from Lake of the Pines all the way to the Dallas Metroplex. And that would be a 70, they say it's. And that would be a 70, they say it's a 72-inch pipeline, we've heard it's actually a 92-inch pipeline, and they want to suck out of Lake of the Pines 117,000 acre-feet of water a year. That's a massive amount of water. It's more than anybody now uses out of water out of Lake of the Pines. Now, if you look at the, the basin, Laura Ashley has talked about Caddo Lake, Jerry Thomas has talked about Lake of the Pines. I want to talk to you about the lake, the basin as a whole. And what you need to understand about the basin, the basin is the black outline, and the basin is like a shallow salad bowl. So in other words, when rain falls, there's a number of feeder creeks that feed into Big Cypress Creek, and they feed all that rainwater into these creeks. And you'll see there's Caddo Lake, if you go upstream, there's Lake of the Pines, you go upstream, there's Lake Bob Sandlin, and if you go upstream, there's Lake Cypress Springs. The contract that the Northeast Texas Water Department has proposed with the North Texas Water Department is for Lake of the Pines water. But that's not the end of the story. What we learned from the Northeast Texas Water Department was that U.S. Steel, pursuant to a nondisclosure agreement, there were contract negotiations between Northeast Texas Water Department, U.S. Steel, and Luminate, which is, operates, or used to operate, a power plant at Lake Monticello. If you look up there at the very top where it says Lake, Lake Monticello. And there is a domino effect that would, would occur if this contract were to occur. And what would happen is this, Northeast Texas Water Department would sell their water. U.S. Steel cannot sell their water out of Lone Star Steel unless Northeast Texas sells their water, because it could not support building that pipeline to Dallas. In addition, and Northeast Texas never told us this, Brandy Brown found this in the North Texas Water Department records, that the North Texas Water Department is in negotiation to buy Lake Monticello property and the water rights of Lake Monticello. So what does all of this mean? Well, first of all, U.S. Steel has the oldest water rights in the basin. Now, why is that important? And that's because when it comes to water rights in Texas, the oldest water rights take precedent in a drought. So that would mean the dominant water rights would be the Lone Star water rights. So that would mean that the North Texas Water Department would have dominant water rights in this basin. And so it gets worse than that. With Lake Monticello, Lake Mon, or Lone Star Steel has a total of 57,000 acre-feet of water that they want to sell. 27,000 of it comes out of Lone Star, Lone Star Lake, the rest of it comes out of Lake of the Pines. Lake Monticello has 15,300 acre-feet of water and property around it that they want to sell for the low, low price of $117 million. Now, if Lake Monticello sells their wa, sells their property and their water rights to the North Texas Water Department, what that means is, under the Texas TCEQ rules, if a water right holder has a dam in between where the source of the water is and where the diversion point is of the water, the water right holder has the right to compel the dam holder to lower the dam and send the water downstream. So what would happen is, you go back to this diagram right here, and if you see, if the pipeline gets built, what that means is, up here at Lake Bob Sandlin, the North Texas Water Department can, now controls the Bob Sandlin Dam. Number two is, U.S. Steel, North Texas, now controls the priority water rights into this basin because they have the older wa, oldest water rights. So what you would be doing, or what they would be doing, if the North Texas, and none of these other sales, this is very important, the U.S. Steel sale of water, the Lake Monticello sale of water cannot occur unless the Northeast Texas Water Department sells their water because the economy of scale just doesn't work. The net effect of all of that is that North Texas Water Department would control the entire basin of water. It would no longer belong to Northeast, to Northeast Texas, it would belong to North Texas. The straw makes all the difference. And there's Lake Monticello, there's Lone Star Lake, there's Lake of the Pines. Control will be eliminated from Northeast Texas. What difference does that make? We already have problems with fish advisories? So what can you do? Well, one thing, you can pass this resolution. The second thing is, is you can show your support to all the other government entities in Northeast Texas who have shown unity in this issue in opposing this water sale. And you can protect your way of life, and you can protect our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Is there any discussion or questions? I see Ms. Gambo's hand.
Yes. First of all, I'd just like to ta, thank District 5 Super Resident Brandy Brown for collecting the masses all over this region to really fight for this, as well as, you know, regionality is important, and I've had very close communications. Thank you to Upstate County Commissioner Dustin Nicholson, sitting in the back precinct too, as well as Judge LaFleur from Marion County. The question has been asked, why does it matter if Longview gets involved? Well, as you have heard today, matters for various reasons. And another very important reason is that in intake and pipe alone, Longview spent $27 million in infrastructure investment. Water rights affect our entire region for various things: quality of life, preserving our natural habitat, economic development, amongst just a few things. I've gotten calls not just from District 5 residents, but also area businesses, community partners, as well as regional leadership in regards to supporting this because of how crucial it is. I think it's important that as we consider this, we remember what the gentleman just stated, that hundreds of thousands of acres are potentially gonna be taken away from us. I believe when I spoke with Mrs. Brown, at the end of what is said and done, we could be left with less than 90,000 acres to help our residents within this region. So I think this truly does affect us, and I think that we should stand together with the counties that have approved this, that directs them directly. But this also does have a direct impact on our water resources, our residents, as well as our residents have also put this $27, $27 million investment in. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? In a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you so much to our speakers for being here. That concludes our meeting, and we will move on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you are up first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd just like to say, as we close, for all the students out there, not just Pine Tree, but my district, but also Longview, Haswell, Spring Hill, this month, as we close, and we started this week, but throughout the state, we have a star test. And I just want to, you know, as, as a community, encourage our kids and their families, and just being able to do their very best is good enough, and good luck to all the kids out there, and the teachers, and they're really proud of what you do each and every day in public schools in Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, we have our Easter extravaganza this weekend at 1 o'clock at Broaden Recreation Center. It will be from 1 to 4 with plenty of events. There will be an Easter egg hunt, Easter egg hunt, pictures with bunny rabbits, face painting, music, vendors, food, games, from 1 to 4. So please come out and join us this weekend from 1 to 4.
Excellent.
Also, we want to talk a little bit about with our, our recreation fees and how they've been working out. At Paula Martin Jones, the average daily visit in March 2024 was about 34 compared, compared with the 65 this past month. That's a 30, a 91% increase. And at Broaden, the average daily visit in March 2024 was about 47 compared with this past month of 61, which is a 30% increase. Memberships have bumped up, bumped up as well, according to Mr. Albertson's. Thank you. And we have 302 paid members between both recreation centers and before the fee change compared to the 48, 448 members under the new universal membership, and that's a 48 increase. So congratulations with the freeing, the fee changes, and it looks like it's working out fine.
Yes.
I just want to add to that, I've seen a lot of people in my district that have really been surprised at how, and I appreciate the city for that, city council and their vote, the, the fees, and making that affordable for our families and kids. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Wade.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to discuss something that's become my project. And so with that, I asked the staff at the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center to share one of their adoptable dogs with me, one of their adoptable puppies. Makes it more adoptable if you say puppy.
That's right.
All right. With me, to help encourage adoptions. It's very important, it's very crucial. Here is, here's what they said, and thank you very much. On our screen, Mabel is a staff favorite here at L-A-C-A-C. She has such a funny personality and loves to play ball. She does get along with other dogs well, and always has energy to play, but is just as happy napping on her bed in her kennel. She keeps her kennel clean, and it's great to walk on a leash. She is ready to walk out the door with her new forever family today. So I'd like to encourage people to head down and our Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center and meet Mabel, and possibly some of the other puppies that are there. And if someone listening today does agree to adopt Mabel, we would love to have a picture of it, of you and her together, so we can share it in next and future city council meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. I love that idea. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Newsstand?
Yes, this Saturday is the Chautauqua Festival, and-
The what?
Chautauqua.
Chautauqua Festival?
Say it again?
Chautauqua Festival? Chautauqua? Chautauqua?
You're doing good.
All right. So this, it's this Saturday, it's a very fun event, it's a free family event. They're gonna have, it's at the Longview Public Library, and it's gonna include live music performances, local authors, artists, craft activities, art installations, artisans' food trucks, face paintings, and so much more. So definitely go down for that this Saturday. That'll be between 10 and 2. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gambo.
Just a couple things. I'd just like to thank Public Works for all the work they've been doing in District 5, as well as Mr. Mark Robinson. We've had some power issues in District 5, so I'm so grateful that he literally, after he came back from a legislative trip, went to a residence home at 10:00 PM that somehow caught on fire, but we helped mitigate it. So thank you for that. Happy Resurrection Week, and don't forget the Longview Rodeos coming up. So if you have not gone to the rodeo, support the Longview Gregton Rotary, who uses the money from the rodeo for grants that directly impact our community. So if you have not got your tickets, make sure you get them for the Longview PRCA rodeo.
Mr. Pertle? Anything, Mr. Mcfee?
I have a number of things. I want to first celebrate our ability to have discussions. I know sometimes it seems like we're disagreeing up here, but it is so valuable that we are all have our own opinions. That's what you have us up here to do. It would be no good if we all thought the same way. So I just want to celebrate that we can have a healthy discussion. We still love and respect each other. I will speak for myself, we still, I love and respect each of you, and I'm glad we are a team. And that the Broaden Rec Center is a example of that. That was brought up by Mr. Wade, and Mr. Pertle, and Mr. Albertson came up with a creative solution, and that is working wonderfully. And I think that's a great thing to celebrate, and that's a good example of how we can all come together with differences of opinions, but do the right thing for the citizens. So, good job, guys. City of Longview Job Fair is first up on my list, Thursday, April 17th, from 3 to 7 at Mod Cobb. This event aims to connect job seekers with various employment opportunities across city departments. Please come out and check out our job fair. Community Volunteer Fair, the unpaid version of that, is coming up on April 22nd from 10 to 6 at the Longview Exhibit Center. This will be our second year to have a volunteer fair. If you are looking for volunteers, please register to have a booth. If you are looking to plug into the community and be a valuable contributing member, please come and sign up with some of those nonprofits. To register for free booth space, you must register with us by Friday, April 11th. That is coming up tomorrow. Please register by tomorrow. E-Waste Event, friendly reminder that our electronic waste event is happening Saturday, April 26th, from 8 till noon. You are required to have a voucher to participate. It does not cost you any money, but you need to go on our website and register to bring your electronic waste for us to take care of for you. And on Good Friday, we will be closed, the city offices will be closed, Friday, April 18th, but your trash collection will run on regular schedule that week. You may have seen on Facebook, at our next meeting, we'll have a recycling update for you. And with that, we are adjourned.
I have one more thing.
Go for it.
So, you know, we got a new utility billing system. So I've gotten a lot of questions about that recently. If you did not know, you need to email our department. I think Rollin can give you that information. You can request your account number and your customer number. That way, you can track all of the billing for the City of Longview under one portal. Do you want to say anything?
We appreciate your patience as we transition to a new utility billing system. If you have any questions, please contact your council person. Thank you. We're adjourned. Did you want to say anything on that one?
No.